Six months, we have four, Madden, clerk, Utah Road.
Harry Adams.
Here.
Brittany Branham.
Here.
Shay Branham.
Here.
Danny Gerhart. Michael Lafferty.
Here.
Phoebe Nunnery. Roy Roberts.
Here.
Don Lewis.
Here.
We have four, it's a little bit indication, Apple. We have courts.
I'd like.
Okay.
Father God, thank you for this day you've given us, or I think for the weather, even the rain, for its purpose, I'm thinking for everyone here, God, for this evening and for our safety. Thank you most of all to Jesus, pray that you be with the people in this room, make good decisions that are good for the city, but also may that please you, we pray this things in your name, amen.
Everyone please rise to the covers, thank the white, go do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the bills. Summon. At most may it say, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of nine seventeen and nine point seven minutes. At most may it say, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Visitors. Bobby Monroe West is driving quite a long ways when he leaves here, and he's going to discuss the DMX with us, and I'm gonna let him tell you all about it, and see what you guys think. We have a generous review, and has reviewed, a copy of the letter of intent, I guess it is, or letter of agreement.
Right.
If you have, but go ahead and tell us about that. Tell us today.
Um, I'm Bobby Monroe from Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and we've been in business for a hundred twenty-nine years, and I only tell everybody I started the company a hundred twenty-nine years ago, but kind of much of, but anyway, we are in the business of third-party collections, any type of debt collections, we're very, very good at it. We are brand-new into Kentucky, been very successful in Carolinas, North and South Carolina, and also West Virginia, we've been in West Virginia less than five months, and this program that I'm presenting tonight to you guys, in less than five months, we've collected over a million dollars in new revenue for about sixteen municipalities. I've got your council meeting, this is only my second time in Kentucky, your council meeting tonight, and then Radcliffe tomorrow night, and I booked Corbin today, London, and the other one state, I met with, they're all very interested, Lexington, actually Colby, they're very interested in this program as well. But the way it works is we identify businesses coming in to Prestonsburg without a business license. These are companies coming in from Florida, North Carolina, Tennessee, dropping their products off, and never getting the business license, you never get any of that from that business. It will not interfere with anything you're doing here in the city, the folks that are still doing their day-to-day routine where a retail company, brand-new, coming into Prestonsburg will still come in here, subcontractor wanting for, you know, concrete slab or eggs and sheet block, they'll still come in here and get their business license, just like they always do. We'll get a copy of your businesses that you're currently doing business with right now, then we'll compare that to a list that we have. I know you guys have hospitals, some schools here in town, those are just a few that we look at, we know exactly who the hospital has for their vendors, even though they're not-for-profit, their vendors are for-profit, and right before I walked in here, I called the office, we found one vendor for the city of Hurricane, ninety-eight thousand dollars for one vendor. They gladly paid it, they've been doing business there for over twenty-seven years. You guys are allowed to go back five years, the statute allows you guys to go back for five years and collect penalties, so we would identify those new businesses coming in based on your list, if they're not on, the ones that we have on our list are not on your list, we go after those. We'll send you every month a new list of twenty to thirty new businesses that you will still approve, even though we have a list of your businesses, we still want you to approve those. Any of those businesses that you have been working with, you can just mark those off, if we send you a list of thirty, you mark off two, we'll go after the other twenty-eight. It's all performance-based, if we don't collect anything, you don't owe us a dime, so you actually get paid first. So what we'll do is we'll send out your business license, just like you normally would have, in the top right-hand corner, be able to DMX for DMX, we'll pull your ordinances off the website, calculate any of those things that are involved in that, and then the check will be sent directly to you guys first, so you'll get paid first, and then we'll get paid thirty days later. We do a hundred percent of the work, and the split is fifty-fifty, and I've always told everybody, Mayor, you'll probably have a lot of people come through that door, want to do business with your city, but you'll never have people that come in knocking on yours and say, hey, Mayor, we want to go to work for you guys, but before we go to work for you, we're gonna pay you first, then you pay us. It's usually the other way around. And the program is very successful, and like I said, we do a hundred percent of what we do, all the calling, all the collecting, it will never interfere with any of your local businesses, your retail businesses, your hospital, your schools, they'll never even hear about us because all these businesses that we identify every month to you, it is a big revenue generator for a municipality your size, over thirty to a hundred population, you're looking at anywhere from a hundred thousand up to a million dollars in a year of brand-new revenue. That's important, but the key thing is that you've got so many businesses out there every month that are bringing their products in and not doing it legally. So what we do is we identify those for you, but all those companies that we identify for you, they're already doing business all around you anyway. They're delivering their products to Lexington, Louisville, Corbin, Paris, and they already have a business license there, they just haven't been identified yet here, and so that's what we do, we make them compliant. So every year, you'll have anywhere from two-hundred-and-forty to three-hundred-and-sixty brand-new businesses that will be in Prestonsburg record for, basically, and then, so we share the revenue going five years back, and then two years going forward, everything is re-identified. The ones that you have are your businesses, we don't touch those, those are a hundred percent yours, but after two years, everything that we bring you is then a hundred percent Prestonsburg. So, I mean, it is a great program, it's a great way to generate the revenue, it's also a great way to get all these businesses in compliance, and so with that in mind, I mean, it's a real simple program, and that is one thing that we do, the other thing that we do, six months down the road, if you guys are interested in doing it, we do any type of third-party collections, whether it be a police fines, water sewer, utilities, we can also do an audit on your utilities and funds, those are things that we can do on down the road, but this is a very productive program that does work, like I said, it's all-performance-based, if we don't find anything, you don't owe us a dime, but we have never had a municipality that we didn't find revenue for, ever, and even though it's a two-year agreement going forward, we've never had anyone stop the agreement because we're finding new businesses every month, and we're bringing money to the city every month. So, questions, concerns, ideas?
Give us an example of something that you all do find, some type of business that you, that is, you promote and defend these things.
Yeah, of a transporter out of Florida, we identified last, two months ago, one was ninety-three thousand, the other one was sixty-six thousand, and they are nationwide. But it's just anybody that's coming in to Prestonsburg that's doing business, that's getting paid, whether they're getting paid one time or a thousand times, they're supposed to have a business license. But as far as, did that answer your question?
Yeah, because you brought up like the hospital, hospitals on the city limits.
It's, okay, it's not in the city limits, okay.
But we do have clinics.
They have clinics that are based off that, based on their deliveries.
Right.
Go to the hospital, the hospital has courage to deliver.
Right, so any, any business within the city limits is, would be considered as program. Schools also is another.
Foods.
Schools, restaurants, absolutely, anything like that. Sometimes I'm asked at council meetings, well, tell us exactly how you do it, I say, well, that's in the secret sauce, I can't really tell you, I'd kill you.
Are you doing any cities in the state right now?
Not in Kentucky, sir, no, sir, but this is only my second time, I met Mayor Less at the conference in Kentucky a few weeks ago, and, but we've got several that, I know Radcliffe is signing up tomorrow, and then like I said, you guys are interested, but I've got probably fifteen that are trying to schedule either a council meeting or get us on board to go, but in less than five months, I've signed up sixteen in West Virginia, in South Carolina, we have over sixty that we've been collecting for.
Would it be possible for the first or references?
Absolutely, yes, sir, absolutely.
Is the rest of rent negotiable also?
No, sir, well, if you want to pay us more.
Well, there's a contract requirement in Columbus, Kentucky, if it's negotiated rent, then the mayor has to, there's different avenues that we're required to do.
Yes, sir.
So, and being a collection agency typically, a collection agency is over thirty percent.
Right, so if it's dealing with consumers on like police fines, utilities, that is negotiable, but this is on the business license, which is not dealing with consumers, so it is a flat rate of fifty-fifty.
That was gonna be my question, you said that you have third-party, like, if you come in and identify as a collection agency, businesses that are owing, I assume that that twenty-four-month period doesn't extend to that, that any, any taxes they pay after that. If we had to identify you to collect on just one certain year for them, then you're not gonna?
It would be any, any, any funds that were received going two years forward, but on the consumer side of it, for like the utilities and stuff like that, that's a totally different agreement, that's like a non-paid agreement.
Okay.
Because we got, we're dealing with Consumer Act and the consumer laws, but these are businesses, strictly businesses, but on this, we, like I said, we do a hundred percent of the work, and you guys will not have to touch anything in the city other than just approving that list once a month. So it is, it's two totally different agreements, with the business license and then any type of debt collections, third parties, but you're exactly right, these, these are around thirty, thirty-five percent, and that is negotiable.
Yeah.
And what is not negotiable is on the age of the debt, the dollar amount, and you know, being over five years, you can pretty much kiss goodbye, you're not gonna get that most of the time, but anything that's like a hundred twenty days or less, we're very successful at collecting that. Like I said, we've been doing it for a hundred twenty-nine years, every phone call is recorded, we've never been in kind of litigation, and never gotten any pushback from any business ever since we've been doing this.
Any more questions up? Agreed agreement?
I did.
You okay with it?
Uh, you mean in terms of an agree?
Yeah. Well, I like to see some references first.
Well, we'll need an agreed agreement, check references, I don't know if we'd be required to.
I might send those to the last.
I'll give it to you.
I'll get those to you tonight.
But I'm, would we be required to just say that? Agreement for the mayor to sign, or is this something that we'd have to vote on?
I think you're just a discussion tonight, aren't you?
Yeah, it's an audience discussion tonight, give you all an opportunity to know what's going on before you even get to agree. That was, I want you guys to be aware of what's going on. Now, it's really sort of professional services, and it's sort of not, because it's a whole new wild man thing, and I'd be up to the Attorney General and say, yes, professional service, no, it's not, that's why we're discussing here in closed meeting, you all know where it is. Now, if you all, if we're getting everything out to you, I didn't want to send you an agreement, and you all say fifty-fifty, and then not understand what he was doing.
Right.
Because that just, you know, you see fifty-fifty scares you dead. That's not all of our taxes, it's only a taxes that they find and they locate.
The collecting taxes.
Yeah.
And these are companies typically that, you know, no matter, what's that, yes.
Yeah, they're usually coming in, walking off.
Well, what interested me in it also was, I mean, delivery trucks or whatever you see.
Driving through town.
James can't go and follow all of them, so, you know, you wonder, are they going through town, or are they stopping somewhere?
That's why I was asking.
He's got a database that we'll never have.
And that's why I was asking, too, this doesn't negate anything that we would do or I would do for the city.
Right.
To collect what we identify, this is simply a whole other.
Right.
Right.
This is different revenue.
He only collects on what they identify, what we already have on our license, that's why, that's why he'll get his copy of our license.
I understand after two years, it becomes ours also.
It's a hundred percent yours, yes, sir.
After two years behind.
I'm saying that.
Stuff that we're not collecting for, I have.
Yeah.
And we have, I mean, we have large, much larger cities too, that say, well, you know, we've got fifteen code enforcement offices, I'm telling you, you can have thirty, they will never find what we find because of our database that we've, you know, had over the years. Like Walmart is a big one, they'll send you a vendor list, but they never tell you a hundred percent who their vendors are, we know who their vendors are, so when we come into town, we'll call Walmart, or we'll call that vendor, and they'll say, hey, listen, they'll say, where are you guys now, we're in Prestonsburg, West Virginia, oh, okay, just send me what we have, and we collect them.
Subcontracts too, that fall out of those vendors that.
That's correct.
That are hard, hard to trace.
And we just, we discovered a really big one today for Walmart, which is nationwide, so it's here too, so it's a really big, really big vendor, so, but yeah, this is a hundred percent new businesses that are not involved with Prestonsburg right now, but if you, if your folks are working on, you know, two or three or four or five of those, you mark those off each month, and then we'll go after the rest of them, because the ones that you've been working on rightfully, you should collect, you should get. Give you an example today, we got another call from Princeton, West Virginia, and they got a list from their hospital, he said, we can't make heads or tails out of this. He sent it to us, we've already identified over seventy new businesses that they couldn't find, we knew, we know what their, how they, you know, they abbreviate everything, so it's hard to find who they are, but we know who those companies are, and we're gonna start sending them thirty each month, just on the hospital side, not counting, you know, the others that we're finding right now for them, so, but there's a lot of revenue here, and you, you look at restaurants, you know, vendors in there, even though they say they've got, they're dealing with two different companies, a lot of times they're dealing with six or seven different companies that provide food for them, so, but.
When you get references together, you know, the new ones are nice, I'd like to see some older ones too.
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir, those are the ones that we actually send you, I thought already, maybe not have, but.
I may reference them.
Okay, I'll, I'll get those tomorrow to you, and.
Sure, either one, just to make sure.
I'll send them to both, and I'll get it to you, but yes, sir, I'll send new and older ones that have been with us for years as well.
Sounds good. Um, now, let's get down to the elephant in the room here, North Carolina, blue shirt.
You're gonna keep the state.
Come to Kentucky.
Well, my son's a Marine, he loves Kentucky, so.
Okay. You're half off of it.
My son loves Duke.
Well, that's all I care about.
African women's got wiped out.
Get that, get that, I'll immediately forward after them.
Okay.
And the next meeting we have, whether it be a special call meeting or whatever, we'll make sure that your, that DMX is on there to be approved or disapproved, and voted on by them, and if it's voted on, I'll sign it, get to you quickly, how's that?
That sounds great, I've never had anyone not approve us.
Yeah.
Just the pressure's on back on you, because it is free money, but thank you all so much, I appreciate your time, and it's nice meeting everyone, and you mind if I leave?
That's a welcome take.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
We got some more visitors here. Agree? You have anything you want to say or do? All right, real quickly, the, I mean, car show does a, when they had, when they started having a car show last year, their goal was to pick out a not-for-profit, and all the funding would go to them, with no questions asked, so, well, there is questions asked with the nonprofit stuff, but all the funding, all the monies, that, I think, would go to them, so very fortunately, we had a pretty decent car show considering the weather, because obviously you can't get out, they won't get, they won't get their cars out at that time, but you girls won't come up?
Family resource.
You guys stand in front of camera. And I'm gonna ask Mike Willis to join us, he's the one that did the show, I'm actually gonna let him present the check to you all, but we have a check for seven hundred dollars, so cool.
I was gonna take it with you.
There's kind of a bunch of chicken, and we weren't ready.
And just to get everybody's attention, it is an additional seven hundred dollar check, that's what we do. We made that easier than you.
Thank you all so much.
So, and I want to make sure, you guys correct me if I'm wrong here, a hundred and twenty dollars feeds a child for a school year.
Yes.
So, so really, we're feeding seven children for that house.
Yes, yes, we have a hundred and seventy-one children, until accounting, and every Friday, they go home with a bag of, I'm gonna get emotional, because these children.
It's okay?
They make sure they come and get their bag of food, and we have children that make sure that they're little brothers and sisters, they'll say, look at your list, has my little brother been here, because they need this food, they really need this food, and this will go so far, and we, and we just appreciate it so much.
We really appreciate it, thank you all.
I appreciate it.
It's okay we head out, Wes?
Yes.
Okay.
No, not you.
Not me?
No, they are, they know you can't. I can't, it's Brian. My, my Bobby Carter in the car show.
We're in thirty-five this year.
Yeah.
It's a turn I get, it was real cold. And wet.
Yeah.
Rainy.
A little water, they won't run those cars. Do we have any unfinished business in the last meeting? No, do we have any other visitors that want to speak before we go on in the rest of the meeting? All right, unfinished business. Any other? Okay, new business. Formant of two Prestonsburg City Utility Commissioners. I've received no other names, I like to point Wayne Brown and Phil Ellie.
Do we need Bobby Visely?
No, well, we have, well, we need a real talk vote for that, what we do.
Bobby needs Visely for person.
For person? Yeah, we will have to do that. I would say this, this, the business, I like to put a statement out, let's go.
That's true.
That's right, do you want? Do we have enough matches? Yes, all right, we'll do Wayne Brown first, after we have a quick, so I need a motion to start off with now.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Just to add the two, or?
Add the two.
Add the two.
Yes.
We added the two in the last time we had the.
We did the ordinance to add two, now we're adding the people to fill those two positions.
So we've, we've already set the board up for five now?
Yes.
Say where he was at.
At the MAC.
Yeah. All right, any discussion on Wayne Brown?
Is Wayne still up at Pella Creek?
No.
He's right there.
He lives in Saturday.
He's outside, no. Don asked him, slangs, what's that?
Yeah. Any discussion?
Brother's mom. Saying he's his neighbor, you don't want to get in trouble with him.
All right, all in favor? All opposed? I'll say. All right, Wayne is approved. Next one is Phil Ellie.
Do we need Lee?
He's sitting there facing.
I don't vote, but I didn't know if you wanted to, to say something, you're on your, I didn't believe it.
Would you feel comfortable? Would you feel comfortable?
Probably.
I'm a bad man.
I don't want to say something, I don't, I don't.
She's gonna go back and watch it on Facebook.
She's gonna go first, please.
I don't know what she's saying.
I'm a little bad man, they weren't good to his face.
Well, I'll make the motion, we had Phil Ellie. At most be a second.
Second.
Discussion. Be no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It will be our two new appointments to the board. Come out there. Hey, Mary Meadows, if I get a wind in that door, can we close the doors in, keep some of this stuff out? No, I have to keep the door open, that's all for me. I was, Mary is queer as me all the time, I just want to put Mary there and catch up with her. All right, equine lease renewal, we have Chris Heather Moore here, end of this month is the equine lease, we did it last year at the September meeting at the MAC, you guys talked to them before, so, you guys got something, you want to speak first, Chris?
All right, however y'all want to do it.
Yeah, go ahead and speak, tell us what, tell us where you're at.
All right, my name's Chris Moore, my wife Heather, she stepped out of the truck, I think we're going to the ER soon as we get done, she can't, so she's not gonna stand, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Yeah, so, anyway, as I said, we leased the equine center from you guys last year in September, I think it was, actually November, before we technically.
Took place on the paperwork place.
Right, took place and got in there, we ran across a lot of adversity, we hit a lot of brick walls with this lease of the facility up there, and it's taken us almost a year to turn around and head the direction that we are wanting this facility to go, and that's why we're here, we, we want to go again for the next year, we got a lot more confident, things were working order now, operating like they should, and, you know, we want to move, we want to move forward again, we feel that we have a better ring on it at this time, taking over in November, we went right into the winter, I mean, if you guys remember, we were held on plumbing to April this year.
It only rained twice this year.
Three times.
Yeah, once for forty-five days, next for thirty, and back for.
There you go, there you go. We, you know, one, one thing that we did have that was a little bit tough for us, we felt when we took over the equine center up there that we was walking into what was a working business, we walked into a shell of tore-up stuff, pictures, proof, we took pictures from the get-go when we walked through the door, on a facility up there, and it's, it's taken quite a bit of time and quite a bit of money out of my pocket to get this place back into, you know, a working facility. With each, with businesses, we also own businesses nationally, we own the boat, you know, we have Rockdale Boat Mark down there, and I didn't walk in my first year, Rockdale Boat Mark, and just take off running and make four million dollars, it didn't happen, it just took a little while to get it into order, and it's the same thing with here on this hill, it's taken a little while, and you go into the business thinking that you're going down one particular road, and you learn that there's a better avenue, and we have learned a better avenue with the equine center up there. We have a lot going on, it's probably, I would consider it being behind, behind closed doors, so to speak, because it's not a big Prestonsburg city function, you know, we've got, we go through the racing facility and the racing community all over, all over, we have people that come out of Florida that stay with us a week or two at a time, and then they move on, you know, we've got trainers, boarders up there right now, we've got people from top of the hill that come down and go through the horses, you know, so on and so forth, so it's, you know, we, we had an initial thought, an initial plan on what we wanted to do, well, it's taken us up to this point, I feel that this coming year, we can better execute our original plan, it's been a, a process getting to this point, there was not as much left as, as a dad gun pitchfork on that, there was nothing, the place was done, wiring tore out, boards down, you know, just a mess, and it took quite some time, you know, we, we work for a living too, so you don't have every waking moment to stand right there on top of it at first, it took quite some time for us to get it back into what we call, you know, working regular place to be, and we want to push forward, we don't feel that we had a real good opportunity this year to do what we originally wanted to do with it, and I think we persevered and overcome quite a bit to do what we had done with what was there.
I've got a few questions that probably need to do in executive session, if we could to discuss this, if available?
Okay.
We do that?
We can through, well, because, because the current lease is in potential litigation, you can go into executive session.
I'd like to do that.
Under litigation, but it.
potential expansion or upgrading of the business. So, you say you want to upgrade, we can go into executive session with that, and you abstain and room with us, so we can discuss it. But that's, are you upgrading the, the business?
Upgrading.
Upgrading the business, you're upgrading, you're going to be doing more, right?
Every year, I want to upgrade every year. That's why you're in business.
You might want to throw G in there too, in case you do want to talk about where we are at this point.
G George and C Charles. Sixty-one point eight one oh subsection one G as in George for the business discussions because we upgrading, because if the lease is going to be negotiation, it'll be different. And sixty-one point eight one oh subsection one subsection C for litigation. So, any motion?
I do.
I got a second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion coming out, motion coming out, second, all in favor? All opposed. Okay, per three, and ordinance number one, one four, ah, it's two zero one eight. At the orders of the city of Prestonsburg, Kentucky, amended ordinance numbers oh six two thousand eighteen to reflect changes in the two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen annual budget. No discussion in any, this is per three. Other new business, about three things want to discuss. One is triple branch, I thought, put that again today, I said, Cliff, I need to get this stuff out. Sure as we don't, the range will catch us off the hook. Cliff said that he was literally had the bid package he's working on next time I call him, and...
Susan heard it was already out. Or be it, Susan had heard it was already out, or be it, so that she was...
From two thousand, it was supposed to already been out, but there's a hangup somewhere. Maze Branch is about six weeks behind it, the, the trail that we got the one point nine million dollars in, the Grand Crown, it is NEPA, which is Environmental Investigation and Do-It's Come Back, it's okay, it's now sent to the Office of Surface Reclamation nine and environmental, and as soon as they sign off over it, they will release the funding to buy the rocks. As right now, we got a ten twenty-two closing, so it's costing us nothing, there's not even a match on it. So, and the way it's set up, we can bid with local people too. They've already actually taken bids on getting the track up, so it'll move pretty quick. Uh, one other thing is the festival this weekend, I, I'm making a list to make sure I don't miss anybody who we think maybe did a wonderful job of getting it in place. The parade was outstanding, but festival was about third largest, larger than ever has been before. We increased our activity over here by putting a, yeah, it's a lumberjack thing, and it probably won't be that next year because the show's only thirty minutes, there's other shows like it that expand, have like an hour show, which would be, I think would be a lot more entertaining for people, because you've got to watch them now since October, so...
What do you think about changing the traffic flow around?
Everybody I've talked to liked it, the consensus was, they could literally keep one fourteen open until they saw a parade get right here. Because it wants more time to get in town, so, a lot more time to get, and it's easier to get around, because if you go out down there, once you get through, you just go ride out there, and you know, it's a fight to track. So that's pretty good, and I...
How many estimates are for rest of his heart?
We, I took a video backstage, and then from, from the back of the stage, so I could do it, and I started sectioning off from cabinet, and I'm going to say probably fifteen, sixteen hundred.
Wow.
Because if y'all notice, we expanded our bleachers, we moved it back, well, it used to have stuff right on the sides, we moved it back, and it was, it was shoulder to shoulder all the way.
Yeah, but behind you, there were city on both sides of the road too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's why I'm saying, probably fifteen, sixteen hundred people, and it was a great concert.
You did three thousand, if it'd been twenty degrees warmer.
Yeah, probably said, three thousand, we'll be able to see, it moves back through there. I will say this, TCN and Country Network was in, and we had our premiere show on Friday night over the MAC, with CMX twenty-three live, and that's a project I've been working on for quite some time. It's not really associated with the city, but it sort of is, because if everything works out, then we'll put a TV station in the MAC, and it's going to represent all of the region. Mike was there, and I think Mike can testify that it was good, Ricky was there, it was, I'm telling you, it was great. Don was there, that's right, Don was there, taking our local talent, putting them in main households, and then turning around and sending them back to that website that is introducing that applies in region to the world. It's an opportunity that we can't pass up. Mary Meadows is there! All right, Mary, good comments. Yeah, you're on the spot now. Oh, come on, Mary, what do you think of it, seriously, I'm asking.
It'd be in the newspaper.
I'll tell you what, Linda did it.
So, all right, I, are they going to do an advisory board on this, because I've heard...
We are doing advisory board on that.
I think a couple of artists were, like, really like, because it, the, the local talent uses their own music, they don't do...
They have to use their own music.
Have to use their own...
They have to, yeah, we don't...
Couple of guys that said, you know, we'd like to be able, because they have their own websites, they have their own albums, they'd like to be able to have, because if you're at twenty million households, just that, you're getting a few extra, if you get one percent click, you're getting exponentially more than you get locally.
And our Roku.
You keep saying Roku, I don't even know what Roku is. I got Netflix.
You can't get on your glass tube, P P.
Okay, can I get on my computer?
Yeah, yes, yes. But that was just, that was just really, really good, I'm telling you, it was just, I've, I've been impressed with our festival, but at the, we had planned to do some work in Ashland and Federal Peru, we ended up coming over here and playing the Freudberg and play Jamison, their own concert.
We signed a contract with Sudden Moon yet?
No, we're still waiting on the deal act.
Maybe we should request them to put that channel locally.
We can do that, because we, we're going to have two channels. Well, we're bits of development.
But they can carry that channel instead, they can change, they can do T C E instead of G A C.
I'd like to wrap that up, because we need to have some, we'll have some discussions later on, once we get the final, once we get to where we can get to an order. The FCC has now decided, of course, this is federal, if we have a channel, they can take that channel as in-kind franchise fees and take it off the table.
So if we bring in two thousand dollars a year of franchise fee, they can say, that's what that value is.
There you go.
We'll issue a check.
There you go. So, that Linda Ain, our telecommunication attorney's great, and they're discussing back and forth, and then when she gets everything hammered out, they'll put it... This, this FCC regulation just came out like two weeks ago, so I'm really glad we brought that up. All right, any other business?
You're starting to build some business, new business?
That's old or new business, but we don't have any develops on it, he's not got his price back yet, so...
Okay.
It's a good question.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I have some to you over.
I need that motion.
Got it.
Send a motion in, will we? Have a second, all in favor? All opposed?